Eyes for the pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Roll call.
Mrs. Bibla?
Here.
Mrs. Mr. Champy? Mrs. Chaitorga-Zagorik?
Here.
Mr. Webby?
Here.
Mrs. McCurdy?
Here.
Mrs. Campbell?
Here.
Mr. Nardone? Mr. Boone?
Here.
And Mr. Macri?
Here.
We have eight members present.
Executive session was held before the August 21st regular meeting regarding contracts, personnel, actions, and pending litigations. Approval of minutes of the regular board meeting held on June 26th and the special board meeting on July 28th, 2020-25 will be sought tonight. Approval of the treasures report for June 2025 will also be sought. Move on to our superintendent's report. Mrs. Malazo?
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for joining us here in person today and also on our district YouTube channel. I do have a few announcements. This is the last meeting that we have right before the start of our 25-26 school year. And there are so many staff members that I want to thank. I wish I could list them all by name, but I do want to thank our maintenance, our custodial, our IT, our secretaries, administrative, administrative assistants, all of the staff that really put a lot of heart and passion and dedication this summer to welcome our students and staff back, and I can't thank them enough. So just want to make sure that we show our gratitude when it comes to our buildings and start the school year again, just showing my appreciation for all that they have done. Just a friendly reminder that this Saturday is our first Comet Community Night. Hours are 5:00 to 8:00 p.m. It's a new night that we're having. It's all of our fall sports from junior high level to JV to our varsity level. We have food truck vendors here. We have all of our booster clubs. We're invited to sell, you know, their gear or some kind of basket raffle, and it's just really to bring our community together. So I invite all of you to attend. Again, that is on Saturday, 5:00 to 8:00. For some reason, if it would rain, it would be on Sunday, the 24th, same time. And I do want to wish all of our fall sports, I know some of them have already started, and just want to wish them all good luck. I was able to witness the FBLA. They did a wonderful job. 132 backpacks were picked up for free. It was a great program that our FBLA chapter put together. So I just want to share an amazing job by Ms. LaValle and all of our students. So thank you to them for providing our community with 132 backpacks. Just a reminder from our committee meeting, we do have free breakfast again for all of our students. Some calendar updates. There's no school on Labor Day, which is September 1st. Elementarys do have their self-guided tours at Rice and Fairview Elementary, 9:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. September 3rd is when we start our in-service days and also meet the teacher nights. So on September 3rd, which is Wednesday, grades four through six at Rice and Fairview, you'll be able to meet your teacher at 5:30 to 7:00 p.m. And also, it's meet the teacher night here on campus, secondary campus, grade seven through 12. That time, you will actually be able to meet your teacher and do a locker setup, and that's 6:30 to 8:00 p.m. Then on September 4th, we also have another meet the teacher night. Again, both elementarys, but that's for grades one through three, same time, 5:30 to 7:00. And our first day of school for grades one through 12 is on Monday, September 8th. And our kindergarten students, their first day is on Wednesday, September 10th. I mentioned last week about bus routes. So on Friday, August 15th, you should have received your personalized message for transportation. If you did not get that email by now, please contact the transportation, Ms. Megan Peters or Mr. David Simonovich. I did just have them post online today on Facebook that Bus Patrol will be live the first day of school. So that is our bus safety program that we have. So more information, it is on our website, but it is also on our Facebook page. You should have also received, I started a new newsletter. It's called Superintendent's Corner. 2,500 people have already read that newsletter, which is great to see. I will be posting those every quarter, and it's just more of a district perspective of what's going on and just had overwhelming support by sending out that newsletter. I also had in that newsletter, and Ms. Otero does have some applications. I'm seeking anyone that's interested in meeting with me on a quarterly basis. It's called the Comet Community Collective, where we're taking applications from teachers, support staff, community members, businesses, local vendors, anyone that would like to meet with me. And you can fill out an application. Again, it's on our website, had it in the superintendent's newsletter, and then also Ms. Otero has them too. They're in the back? Okay, great. So they're in the back. Application process will close on September 15th, and we'll be meeting together. Our first meeting is October 6th, and I plan on posting all the agenda items that we discuss. So if you're a part of that group, you'll be at least able to see what we're discussing. Okay? Let's see here. I think that is it. And again, we're very excited to welcome everybody back, and that concludes my report.
Thank you. Moving on to our committee reports. Public testimony on agenda items only during this section. Please remind, your testimony limited to three minutes. Please come to the podium and say your name and last name along with your address, and if you're speaking for any organization. We'll start with financial planning. Mr. Nardone?
Thank you. Tonight, I will be seeking approval for items one through 13 on the agenda. Any questions from the board? Seeing none. Any questions from the public? Yes, ma'am.
Hi, how are you? Nancy Romanision, 442 Ice Harvest Drive, Ice Lakes, Mountain Top. My question is not specific to the agenda item, but just to follow up on the state budget, because I heard, I couldn't make the work session, but I watched it, and I heard Tommy give an assessment of what's happening with the state budget. Is there a way we can get an update on that, just because I know it affects funding for the school, and I just was wondering if we would be allowed at this time to get an update on the state budget if we know anything?
I'm not aware of any updates on the state budget. Are you, Tommy?
The budget impasse is still in place. The one development that happened with the state related to the budget since the update last week is the state announced that they were going to activate Act 85 of 2016. I think, if I have that correct, Chris, you could correct me if I'm wrong. But what that allows for is the state to intercept debt service payments that are due by the district if it's needed. So, and I mentioned last week, we have 1.1 million due on September 1st. But because of the cash flow impact caused by the budget impasse, the state will cover that for us. And then down the road, when the impasse is over and they give us our subsidies, they'll withhold the same amount. So they're not covering it permanently. They're basically advancing the money, if you will, to cover it. We're hoping to be able to take advantage of that. One of the challenges that has come up in the last few days, really since I sent that update to the board, is I was dealing with a woman in Harrisburg who was very helpful and empathetic and responsive, but because this is a program that has been used so rarely, they don't really have good procedures and forms and processes in place. For example, they have me filling out a form for employee direct deposit as a means to capture bank information with required fields that aren't applicable at all. And there's, so we're through like four rounds of deliverables now, and she's apologizing, and she's dealing with however many districts. We're just one. So she's got to really be frustrated. But I'm getting concerned that because our debt service is due so early on September 1st, I don't know if they will get it done in time for us. Districts whose payment is October 1st or later are probably going to be fine. I'm very hopeful that it still happens, but we got to keep an eye on it. But if we get to August 30th and 31st and their payments aren't out, we may still have to pay the money out of our coffers. We have six borrowings that create debt service for us. Four are bond issuances and two are loans. The two that are loans, if that is late, I'm not too worried about it. There could be a late fee imposed, likely get it waived. But the bond issuances have to be paid on time because there's individual bondholders, JQ Public across the country, expecting them to get their interest on September 2nd. And if it's not there, we start to get calls at the school, and that happened a couple years ago. A guy from Seattle was screaming bloody murder because one of our payments was late. So we can't take the risk on that. If the state doesn't have the wires sent in by, say, August or August 31st, we're going to have to pay it. But hopefully they do. Well, hopefully they get the budget passed, but absent of that, that's really the only development since my update last week. Okay?
But Tommy, from our perspective, we have the cash if we don't get it from the state.
Yeah, our cash balance as of this morning, looking at the, it's non-reconciled, but if you look at the actual bank accounts, we're at 7.7 million. So if we have to pay that and pay the other payments in that we know are due, big ones in September, we're getting well below our comfort zone. But it's still above zero. So I would rather have them pay it and get the 1 million, but if we don't, you know, hopefully, you know, we're okay. But we got to, literally every day, we're looking at to see where those balances are.
Thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions from the public? No? Seeing none, we can move on.
Thank you. Transportation Committee. Mr. McCurdy?
Thank you. I will be seeking approval for item number one. Any questions from the board? From the public?
Thank you. Policy Committee. Mr. Boone?
I'll be looking for approval of item one. Any questions, discussion, or input from the board? Or the public?
Thank you. Human Resources. Mrs. Bibla?
I'll be seeking approval of items one through 13. Any questions from the board? Any questions from the public?
Hi, thank you. Nancy Romanision, again, 442 Ice Harvest, Mountain Top. Some item I'm confused on is item number nine and 10 and 13. So I have three separate issues I would like to discuss. So first, on item number nine, I'm, first of all, there's no detail. It's a little concerning to me because I read, and I'm doing my history again, I'm a special ed teacher, I don't really understand board policies, and I'm learning them, obviously, but that there should be more detail on agendas for the public to be able to understand when they come to a meeting, what's happening and what's, you know, being done with our tax dollars. So I'm a little confused on nine and 10 that there's no detail at all. So I went on my own and found, for item number nine, which says it's a Cresco District Organizational Chart, I found an organizational chart. So are we just approving this for, is that what's happening? We're just, so this was from, this was on the AFR and the PDE website for December of 2024? So is that what's happening? That's just?
Yeah, so part of the auditing process, we are required to have an organizational chart. So once the board approves the organizational chart, when Mr. Benz and Mr. Caputo and the business office go through their auditing, then we will upload this new organizational chart in with the AFR.
So there's no changes to this?
No, there are changes to the organizational chart.
So why didn't we put the organizational chart on here for the public to see?
Because the board didn't approve the organizational chart yet.
Well, nothing is approved unless it goes through here. We should be able to at least see what the thought process is and have a discussion during the work session? I mean, my, I would like to see it before you approve it. As a taxpayer, can we have that table till the next meeting that we can have it in the public? I mean, I would just like to see it from my understanding of understanding how the process works for the school district, if you are making changes, I guess would be my request on that because there's no detail here. And then the second, and so that would be my first one, and then number 10, the same thing, like you're making recommendations on compensation. I thought the budget was approved and done. So how do you change compensation for Act 93 if it was, the budget was approved and submitted? Again, and I apologize because I am new to this process. I'm just trying to understand. Again, if you had attached something that explained it to me, maybe I wouldn't have these questions, but from my understanding of the Sunshine Act, you, as, you should attach more information so I don't have to come here being confused. I could research it ahead of time.
I'll be happy to answer. So the information on the addendum does reflect number 13 and the changes within the organizational chart. So that addendum, we can have that posted if the board approves it tonight on the district website.
Well, I would ask that you don't report that tonight without, I would ask that we table that until next, until you could provide this information to public to understand that you're making changes and it sounds like, I mean, are you, are people getting compensation? Are like, are people getting money in compensation in that change to the budget?
Yes, yes.
And the public doesn't know?
The board of directors have received it in their packet.
No, I understand they have, but again, from my understanding of the Sunshine Act, you should be presenting to the public information for me to review for the meeting. That's my only thing. I just, I have no problem with these changes in what you're doing. I just want to be transparent. I mean, that, like, when I read on the website of the Sunshine Act, it says it aims to promote government transparency, encourage public attendance and participation, because I'd like to participate in an organizational chart, and I like to participate in these, you know, and especially to work session, that I would be requesting then if we're making changes, that we maybe just hold off till September on this and do it during a work session, that like, I would be happy to partic, like, I want to come and attend and understand it better. Would be my request to the board at this time. And then item 13, I guess you're, that's also a change, what would change the Act 93 compensation?
Yeah, so number 11, with the resignation, we are required to have a Title IX Coordinator. So there is required training for that individual, and instead of waiting till September 30th, I'm recommending the board so we can have that transitional period of Title IX Coordinator and communicate that out to our families, update any handbooks that we would need to do that, update our website. So that is the request for number 13.
And that makes sense. Like, to me, that makes sense, but in regards to item nine and 10, I mean, I would personally like to look at, like, because again, I have the current one. I'd like to see a side-by-side before you approve something that's going to affect the district. And you were saying that you're adding compensation on. I mean, I would be concerned also we're adding compensation when we don't have a teacher contract settled and we're in a budget crisis at this time. I mean, personally, that's my own personal opinion, obviously.
May I ask if there's any hiring going to be done? I'm sorry.
I guess I could ask. I mean, I guess what she's asking in, I mean, in regards to this new organizational chart, would there be new hires? Again, I think, I don't even want to go down that path because I'd rather just take a work session, if the board is respectfully open to that, and talk about it openly, transparently to the public, what the new organizational chart is going to look like, and give my feedback. Because again, I'm a special ed teacher that would like to give feedback if there's anything related to special ed happening in the new chart. I don't know, again, since I don't have it and it wasn't provided in the agenda, I had no time to look at anything to understand what the school is doing now to change the organizational structure. And I think that is something the public should know. I think that's information we should know. As well as since it's affecting the budget, which we already, I thought, approved. So you're, I think, adding money to, out of our expenses is, would be my understanding from what, at least what that statement says, but I don't know for sure because you've given me no details of that information. So I would respectfully ask we table this for the work session and provide the documents for, online for us to preview.
From my perspective, I do believe the org chart is just listing the plans for the district. I can understand the fact that holding that off and distributing that, and what that is is, again, org's data chart is what's planned, basically as the district acknowledges changes in how it's administratively functions. So there's certainly gaps on that chart. There's gaps on the old chart. There's positions on the old chart that don't exist or we don't have filled, one or the other. So that I certainly can understand delaying. I mean, the org chart does not necessarily bind the district to its hiring practices. So they're two separate issues. Same thing, someone resigns and we backfill, or we combined it with other positions as we've done in the past.
That makes sense, but again, I think in consideration the fact that I would like to, I'm sure I'm not the only one that would want to know more information about this. I'm just respectfully asking we table it and make it more transparent to the public what your thoughts of the organizational chart is. Again, I've worked in many school systems. I work in 10 different districts. So I've seen, frankly, I was a CFO of corporations, so I worked as my own organizational charts because not only would I like an organizational chart, the other thing I couldn't find was like job descriptions, because that's the other thing I'd want to know. Because again, not, I think there's probably gaps, like you said, there's needs. I just want to understand them and also maybe participate in the discussions that you're having in creating this organizational chart or what your thoughts are so I understand it better. And again, if it is affecting the budget, I don't understand how we don't have more information on here and you're going to approve that without giving me the information on budgetary items as a public taxpayer. That's confusing to me as well. So I, again, would respectfully ask the board to table this, provide that information, and then we bring it to the September meeting, which I think frankly would be better off based on the state budget anyway, because then maybe we know better financially where the state is, that we're not, if you are adding compensation, we at least are in a better position to know where we are financially. I mean, that, to me, is fiscally responsible to know by September 1st, from what Tommy's saying with the budgetary issues. I mean, that's my personal opinion, my request at this time. I would hope members of the board respectfully look at that as a taxpayer that I'm requesting this.
Any other comments? All right, thank you.
Dolores Gagaris, 4 Summit View Drive, Mountain Top, PA. What Nancy was referring to, could it be a rumor that's going around that you hired? Well, no. Two people on the, of administration are going to take an extra job at extra pay. And that's concerning a lot of money to the taxpayers, to every board member up there. If this is true and you're trying to hide it in this, I don't know how anyone could trust you at all. Thank you.
Justin Mirlović, 504 Fairview Parkway, Mountain Top. I agree with Nancy, and also what Mrs. Malazo said is if you're going to distribute the org chart after the board approves it, then it does not allow us to give comments to it or even make suggestions to it. Thank you.
So I can provide a little bit of clarity for what you're saying, Ms. Gagaris and Ms. Romanision, regarding number 10. Regarding number 10, there is, you know, a chain, a chance for a posting to happen if the board would approve this motion for a position. So in the addendum, it states that the Title IX Coordinator, again, which is what we're required to have, the Title IX Coordinator listed, if the board, again, approves, Jeff Parentoni will be getting $5,000 to be the Title IX Coordinator, and that would be a part of his job responsibilities for the entire time to have that additional compensation. The other two items that are on, the addendum is an Assistant to the Superintendent Director of Secondary Education. So as you are aware, we have Mr. Gorm, who is the secondary campus principal. It's not a new position, we're just doing a title change. So it's not a new position. We will still have three, Act 93 administrators, a part of our secondary campus. So it would be Mr. Gorm, just has a title change. Then we have Mr. Parentoni, who is still the vice principal. And then recently, the board had approved Mr. Morgan Craig to be the other vice principal. So his is a title change, not a new position.
Ms. Malazo, I'm just going to interrupt you for one second. I appreciate you giving me this information now, but I do feel like, from what I'm hearing, because I had hoped just to tell me that you're just submitting the same organizational chart. This is different information that I should have had in front of me 24 hours in advance. I mean, I have the Sunshine Act in front of me right now. I researched it because I wanted to understand it, and agenda items are part of the Sunshine Act that you're supposed to be transparent with. This is very vague, and you made significant changes to district, not only the district organization, without the public's information or feedback, as well as the Act 93 compensation, without the public feedback. We should be entitled to come in and discuss this. You gave us no, not you, the board gave us no opportunity.
Were these items on the committee last week? They were not?
Okay. That's why, and I watched it for, that's why I was confused when I didn't see it on the agenda items there, but it's here today.
Well, there's some, like, there's other items.
I just, I don't want to, I literally, I take this job seriously, and transparency is everything to me, everything to me. And I feel like this board has not been transparent, and if we're going to proceed with this, I likely will file then with the Sunshine Act. Because again, I believe you should have had this for me to preview 24 hours in advance because it's detailed information that's important. It's not just, oh, we're just going to shift things around. That's not fair to the public not to understand what we've entrusted this board to do. I'm sorry, I just, I don't want to do that, but I would just respectfully ask, we put this off for a month so we can have the time as public to review this information and comment. That's all I'm asking for. I'm sure all of this is valid, but I think this is fair to the public that I get to look at it and not you just tell me, and I'm trying to take quick notes and understand it and then go back and look at it. Because again, I'm not 100% understanding of how a school board works or the policies of administrations. That would be my request again. If not, I will probably file a violation. I just want to put that out there in black and white.
Do you want me to continue on the addendum so you have all of the information or you're okay? There is more information, or is that all?
No, because that, you didn't provide me 24 hours to look at this.
No, I understand. I just want to be transparent with you. I'm willing to finish what is on the addendum.
You can, but I still would request that this not be voted on tonight until I can see in writing what you're doing. Like, I want to see the organizational chart, just like I saw this one. I'd like to see the new one so I can comment on it. I'd like to see the compensation packages that we're talking about, because again, you're talking about my money, it's, and the taxpayer's money. So again, I have no problem with doing any of this because it probably makes sense, because I do think the district needs a lot of help. You're short-staffed. I understand that, but I just think that you need to be upfront and open with the public on what you're doing, and then we proceed, especially in an environment that we're like, we shouldn't, again, I believe in huge transparency and fiscal responsibility. That's the other thing, because I do think having a teacher contract and giving any Act 93 compensation at times is not a great look either, but if they're valid things, I understand. Like, if there's help that's needed in Act 93, I completely agree. I just want to understand it before we just pass it. Would be my request that we table it till the next meeting and then have a discussion at the work session. Would be, again, my request respectfully. Thank you.
In consideration of the public comment and a bit of a sidebar, my recommendation is that you table item nine.
I couldn't hear you at all. I said table item nine. Oh, okay.
Nine and 10, or just nine?
What's 10?
10 is a compensation.
No, we can, we can do 10.
No, Title IX is number 13. I think that's fine.
I'll make a motion to table item nine. I so move?
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Any opposed? Seeing none? Any other questions from the public on HR?
I'll just make it, so you guys are clear, that I will still be probably submitting a violation claim on item 10, too, because again, there's no details of what you're changing in a budget, which does affect taxpayer dollars. So on item 10, if we're not going to table that, then I will file on that item, too, to the court of common, please.
Dolores Gagaris, I would just like to know if number nine has anything to do with special ed or curriculum? Thank you.
Seeing no further questions, move on. Academic programs, Mr. Boone.
I'll be seeking approval of items one through 17. Just one question before I open it up. Number five, are those two people actually in different buildings?
No, they're in the same building.
Okay, thank you. Other questions or input from board? Or the public? Seeing none, we'll move on.
Thank you. Co-curricular, Mrs. Campbell.
Thank you. I will be asking for approval of items one through six. Any questions from the board? Any questions from the public? No?
Thank you. Physical plant, Mr. Webby.
Physical plant will be seeking approval on items one through five. Any questions from the board? Questions from the public? Hearing none. So I can hear you there.
I'm just wondering, are we still going to keep Mr. Blanchard in his position for the coming year?
Mrs. Gagaris, it needs to pertain to the physical plant.
Well, isn't he?
And it's not an agenda item. You can ask that, you can ask that on non-agenda items.
Sorry.
Any other questions from the public? Hearing none.
Thank you. Technology committee, Mrs. Gatorziger.
Is it, aren't you in charge of the technology? Yeah. Ms. McCurdy's in charge of technology. It's okay.
I'll take it. I'll be seeking approval of item number one, under technology. Any questions from the board or from the public on that item? Thank you.
Thank you. My apologies, Mrs. McCurdy. I was just reading the agenda. I am sorry.
No problem.
Behavioral intervention, health and safety committee, Mrs. Gatorziger.
No items for tonight.
Thank you. LIU, Mrs. Campbell.
Thank you. The minutes are in file in the superintendent's office and on the district website. Next LIU meeting will be Wednesday, September 24th, at 6:30 at the LIU auditorium.
Thank you. CTC, Mrs. McCurdy.
Thank you. Yes, looking forward to another great year. The students will be beginning next week. The minutes are on file in the superintendent's office and on the district website, and the next CTC meeting is September 15th, 2025, at 5:30 PM at the CTC. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll now move on to public testimony on non-agenda items. Please, again, reminded, limited to three minutes. Please come to the podium and state your name.
Dolores Gagaris, sorry. I just want to know, are we still retaining, can't remember his name right now.
Mr. Blanchard.
Mr. Blanchard, thank you. Are we still retaining him?
Yes.
I did see in papers for administration, he's from the '23-'24 school year, he was 70-something thousand, and now he's up to 101,000 for the '25-'26 school year. And that is involved, that has what he's being paid for that 10 hours a week of his second job, or whatever it is that he does. I don't know. I mean, I do know in a way, but I still don't understand why the janitors have to be told what to do every day. Could you please explain that to me?
Why they have to be told what to do every day?
Yes.
We definitely need someone to, so yes, that's part of his duty, is to assign tasks to staff, but he also is in charge of budgeting for that department, vendors, you know, pricing out items to make sure we're purchasing at the lowest cost available. So it's not just about the task-oriented, it's also about the budgeting that goes along with it and all the purchase orders that need to be spent.
I do believe, though, he already gave the budget to Mr. Benz for last year, so don't you think that should be sufficient enough that if you have one budget, it's not going to go up that much?
No, but then all the procurement that needs to happen throughout the year, all of the tasks and projects that need to continue to move this district forward. Yes, we still need him to be a part of that.
Why do we need somebody all of a sudden, when all of those years, we never had anybody?
No, we had our own director of buildings and grounds before. We don't have that person yet.
Well, that's you right now.
It is, yes, partially, yes. But thank you for recognizing that, Ms. Gagaris. I appreciate you. Thank you.
Well, I'm so used to everybody throwing
Thank you.
Things around, and you do bundle, though. You do bundle.
Well, so, Ms. Gagaris, I was looking for you last meeting, so you were not there, but you had said something to me about a flag.
Yes.
And I am pleased to tell you that after this meeting, I believe, we have located that flag.
I think.
And I would, yes, and I would like to show you where that is.
I would love to see that.
And if it is that flag, I don't want you to take it with you today, because I want to have it properly folded for you, and that way you could take it home. But it wasn't me that just found it, but I can tell you.
Oh, no. I do not want to take it home.
Oh, you don't?
That, that flag was to remain in this building. It should have been in a board meeting minutes for those that served in the armed forces.
Well, I can tell you, it's been on campus here.
And it was also to follow them at, to the graduation, because there was no flag 2019. It was a little itty-bitty flag
Yes.
On that stage, but it wasn't because of the, of the school directors. It was, that was the responsibility of the Mohegan Sun.
Yes.
And I do, you've made my day. I really thank you.
Yes, you're welcome. Yes. And if you, if you still want to take it home, you just let me know, but I have it.
That is for, for everybody that served in this school, in the armed forces. I thank you kindly for finding and taking the time, somebody did, after all of these years, to recognize our students that went into the armed services.
And thank you for telling me, because I had no idea. So I appreciate you telling me, and I have the opportunity to show you where it is.
Thank you so very much.
You're welcome.
No other questions. We'll move on to our voting session. I seek a motion, roll call, excuse me, roll call.
Ms. Bibla?
Here.
Mr. Champy? Mrs. Chaitor Zagorik?
Here.
Mr. Webby?
Here.
Mrs. McCurdy?
Here.
Mrs. Campbell?
Here.
Mr. Nordon?
Yes, I'm here.
Mr. Boone?
Here.
Mr. Macri?
Present.
Eight members present.
I so move and seek a second for the approval of minutes of the regular board meeting from June 26th and a special board meeting from July 28th.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. I seek a motion and a second for the approval of the treasurer's report for June 2025.
Motion.
Second.
Roll call.
Mrs. Bibla?
Yes.
Mrs. Chaitor Zagorik?
Yes.
Mr. Webby?
Yes.
Mrs. McCurdy?
Yes.
Mrs. Campbell?
Yes.
Mr. Nordon?
Yes.
Mr. Boone?
Yes.
Mr. Macri?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Financial planning, Mr. Nordon.
I'll make a motion and seek a second to approve items one through 13. I so move?
Mr. Nordon, I'd like to make a motion to table item 10.
Does he have to say that we already tabled nine, or no, we don't have to mention that?
Oh, it's, my excuse. We're, wrong committee.
I just
Wrong committee.
I just read this.
You're good. I have a couple committees ahead. No, no.
In regards to your motion, I say.
Second.
Roll call.
Mrs. Bibla?
Yes.
Mrs. Chaitor Zagorik?
Yes.
Mr. Webby?
Yes.
Mrs. McCurdy?
Yes.
Mrs. Campbell?
Yes.
Mr. Nordon?
Yes.
Mr. Boone?
Under item one, I recuse myself on check number eight, six, four, zero, yes to all other items.
Mr. Macri?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Transportation, Mrs. McCurdy.
I make a motion to approve item number one. Can I get a second?
Second.
Mrs. Bibla?
Yes.
Mrs. Chaitor Zagorik?
Yes.
Mr. Webby?
Yes.
Mrs. McCurdy?
Yes.
Mrs. Campbell?
Yes.
Mr. Nordon?
Yeah.
Mr. Boone?
Yes.
And Mr. Macri?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Policy committee, Mr. Boone.
Recommend consideration and approval of item one. I so move.
Second.
Mrs. Bibla?
Yes.
Mrs. Chaitor Zagorik?
Yes.
Mr. Webby?
Yes.
Mrs. McCurdy?
Yes.
Mrs. Campbell?
Yes.
Mr. Nordon?
Yes.
Mr. Boone?
Yes.
Mr. Macri?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Human resources, Mrs. Bibla.
I make a motion to table number nine and number 10. I so move.
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I'll make a motion to approve items one through eight, 11 through 13. I so move.
Second.
Mrs. Bibla?
Yes.
Mrs. Chaitor Zagorik?
Yes.
Mr. Webby?
Yes.
Mrs. McCurdy?
Yes.
Mrs. Campbell?
Yes.
Mr. Nordon?
Yes.
Mr. Boone?
Yes.
Mr. Macri?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Academic programs, Mrs., Mrs., Mr. Boone.
Recommend consideration and approval of items.
Second.
Mrs. Bibla?
Yes.
Mrs. Chaitor Zagorik?
Yes.
Mr. Webby?
Yes.
Mrs. McCurdy?
Yes.
Mrs. Campbell?
Yes.
Mr. Nordon?
Yes.
Mr. Boone?
Yes.
And Mr. Macri?
Yes.
Motion carried.
I would just like to interrupt one moment. Item number 15, Mr. Benz, your resignation. And I just want to thank you for your dedication and hard work to our distinguished alumni program, and I can't thank you enough for putting that program together. And we appreciate you and your hard work that you've done. So thank you.
Thank you.
Co-curricular, Mrs. Campbell.
Thank you. I am asking for approval of items one through six. I so move, if I could have a second.
Second.
Mrs. Bibla?
Yes.
Mrs. Chaitor Zagorik?
Yes.
Mr. Webby?
Yes.
Mrs. McCurdy?
Yes.
Mrs. Campbell?
Yes.
Mr. Nordon?
Yes.
Mr. Boone?
Yes.
And Mr. Macri?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Physical plant, Mr. Webby.
I make a motion and seek a second for items one through five.
Second.
Mrs. Bibla?
Yes.
Mrs. Chaitor Zagorik?
Yes.
Mr. Webby?
Yes.
Mrs. McCurdy?
Yes.
Mrs. Campbell?
Yes.
Mr. Nordon?
Yes.
Mr. Boone?
Yes.
Mr. Macri?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Technology committee, Mrs. McCurdy.
Thank you. I make a motion to approve item, so, number one, I so move.
Second.
Mrs. Bibla?
Yes.
Mrs. Chaitor Zagorik?
Yes.
Mr. Webby?
Yes.
Mrs. McCurdy?
Yes.
Mrs. Campbell?
Yes.
Mr. Nordon?
Yeah.
Mr. Boone?
Yes.
Mr. Macri?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Our next scheduled committee meeting is on Thursday, September 11th. Our next regular scheduled board meeting is Thursday, September 18th, at 6:30. Both will be held here at the secondary campus. I seek a motion, I so move and seek a second for adjournment.
May I request a brief executive session? I hate to prolong the evening, but regarding threatened litigation, please.
Yes.
Thank you.
Second.
Second. All those in favor of adjournment? Aye. Aye. Opposed? Meeting adjourned.